Bellado.
Here.
Bellado, here, Viera.
Here.
And here, Rita. Abson, Donahue. Donahue, Abson, Holly, here. Holly, here. Farrenwald.
Here.
Farrenwald, here. Osling.
Here.
Osling, here. Thompson.
Here.
Thompson, here. Carr.
Here.
Carr, here. Pittman.
Here.
Pittman, here. Slattery.
Here.
Slattery, here. Coullos.
Here.
Coullos, here. Johnson. Johnson, Abson, Frausto.
Here.
Frausto, here. Alvin present, your honor.
Thank you very much. We move on to the presentation of general proceedings. I need a motion to approve the city council minutes for the date of July the 10th, 2018. Do I have a motion? By Alderman Pittman, Segmaalun Carr, pro call please.
Bellado.
Aye.
Bellado, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Coullos.
Aye.
Coullos, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Eleven ayes, your honor.
Thank you very much. Next time, Mr. Donahue, sir.
Yes.
We move on to public comments. Again, we limited three minutes. What are the issues on the agenda? Whoever, name and address. Go ahead, Alvin.
Carol, defense, 2731 Orchard Street, Blue Island. At the last city council meeting, we heard how Blue Island received a $15,000 refund from the Jawa, and it was discussed afterwards that maybe Blue Island didn't receive as much money back because they didn't have the same percentage in as Midlothian that received $45,000 back. In checking, Midlothian had 6% in, Blue Island 11%. If we can find out where the money came from, exactly where, and why Blue Island's percentages or amount is so much less.
We'll check into it.
Pardon me?
We'll check into it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Augustino Corkis.
I have a question, Mayor. Augustino Corkis.
Yes.
Is he employed by the city now?
No.
I'm a little bit concerned then. I saw that he has an email with the city of Blue Island.
He sends an email. Yes, he sent an email since four years this happened. And I have reacted.
Well, if he's not an elected official and he's not an employee, doesn't that open us up to some type of liability?
We're monitoring his emails, so there should be no issues. He's not an employee.
And I heard he also has desk space upstairs?
He doesn't.
He does not?
He has an office that he uses in and out.
Okay, so he has an office. If he's not an employee and he's not an elected official, why are we giving him office space?
It's not office space to allow him to use an office when he's having meetings with me, bringing in developers for city projects and lands.
So is he a contractor with the city of Blue Island?
He just given us information leads as to possible investors for buildings around the city of Blue Island, properties, et cetera. But he's not on payroll.
It just seems to me that legally this really opens us up.
Then we'll double check with council. But as a right hand, he's not being paid.
Okay, Mr. Marzal. Doesn't that open us up to?
I'm sorry, but where's that word? Does it open us up to what?
To certain legal ramifications. We're letting him use the city of Blue Island address. He could be representing himself as an employee or an elected official.
Why? Instead of giving you a quick look, why don't I do a little bit of research, Mr. Marzal?
Okay. All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else? Report of city officials, mayor's office. Let me mention the passing of Mr. Pat Siedella. His services are being right now, as we see, at Hickey Federal Home, 127th off the western. For the people who don't know who Mr. Pat Siedella, I knew him as well as Alderman Viera and many of you from Blue Island, as working in the Athletic Association along with Sister Marion Patrick for many, many, many years. In fact, the gym at St. Benet is named after him, again for his dedication and commitment, not only to St. Benet or Blue Island. The, let's look this way. That St. Benet basketball team that I played in, the Grammers were back in 1976, they won a lot of championships, not because of me, but because of the other players. I had his recognition. That gym initially was renovated by him and his committee, and boy, did they do a job back then, on their own, getting funding from local vendors, sponsors, et cetera. Again, the deep heart, I mentioned his passing, a great cup stand from what I hear. But again, thank you deeply, Mr. Pat Siedella. And his wake is tonight, his, I guess, services tomorrow at 10:00 in the morning at Hickey, and then the master follow at St. Benet at 11:00. So again, whoever can attend, I highly recommend that. On a lighter note, Morelia, the semi-pro soccer team from Blue Island, it hasn't started its home, as they say in Blue Island, on the north side. I'd like to mention that it's a champion of the Chicago area, correct? And it's going to compete nationally in Los Angeles, if I'm not mistaken? When is this, in order?
At this time, I don't know.
Okay. If I'm understanding, in order for it to get to where it is at this point, as champions of the Chicago metro area, it had to play at at a minimum five teams in a row, which he beat, a team beat. And the majority of these players are from the Blue Island area or the surrounding suburbs. And they've been in the fight for the last four or five years that I know of. And now they're going to go national for the national title. So let's give them a big round of applause because they're one of the top. City Works Business.
Yeah, one request this evening, your honor. It's a motion to approve a request for a block party for the 2800 Block of 142nd Place on Saturday, August 11th, 2018, beginning 8:00 a.m. till 10:00 p.m.
I need a motion by Alderman Holly. We have a second. Alderman Donahue, any questions? Pro call.
Bellado.
Aye.
Bellado, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Coullos.
Aye.
Coullos, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Twelve ayes, your honor.
Thank you very much. Any else?
That's it.
City Attorney.
All the owners here have received transfer funds from restricted assets. An amount between the funds, a total of $518,000, if before, and a break down, Mr. Corley. Need a motion?
Okay, we need a motion by Alderman Osling. Do we have a second? Alderman Farrenwald, any questions? Pro call, please.
Bellado.
Aye.
Bellado, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Coullos.
Aye.
Coullos, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Twelve ayes, your honor.
Thank you very much. That's it. City Attorney.
On the agenda this evening, we have ordinance number 2018-037, an ordinance providing for the regulation of an application for small wireless facilities in the city of Blue Island, County of Illinois. Recent legislation was passed in the State House requiring municipalities such as ours, if we care to, to adopt ordinances to regulate and set up standards for small wireless facilities to be placed on the right of way and to establish a set of fees to be charged depending on the co-location of the wireless facilities in the right of way. This ordinance does that, and as applications are presented, the individual entities will have to present an application as well as pay the fee authorized by state statute, which is $650 to co-locate a single small wireless facility, or $350 for each small wireless facility addressed with insulated application. And then if they want to, they have to pay an application fee of $1,000 for each small wireless facility. That includes the installation of a new pole for such co-location. We cannot preclude the location of small wireless facilities, but we have the ability to at least regulate where they're put, as well as to charge for their location.
Need a motion? Motion Alderman Holly, second. Alderman Viera, any questions? Pro call, please.
Bellado.
Aye.
Bellado, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Coullos.
Aye.
Coullos, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Twelve ayes, your honor.
Thank you very much.
The next ordinance is ordinance number 2018-038, an ordinance authorizing Northern Illinois Gas Company, DVA Nightcore Gas Company, and successors and assigns to construct, operate, and maintain a gas distributing system in and through the city of Blue Island, Illinois. This essentially gives Northern Illinois Gas Company a franchise to operate its system throughout the city and in its rightful way. Apparently, it expired approximately four or five years ago, and they have been requested renewal of their franchise.
Need a motion? By Alderman Coullos, Segmaalun Carr, any questions? Pro call, please.
Bellado.
Aye.
Bellado, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Coullos.
Aye.
Coullos, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Twelve ayes, your honor.
Thank you very much.
Item four is ordinance number 2018-041, an ordinance designating 12020 Maple Avenue as a historic landmark.
Need a motion by Alderman Bellado? We have a second. Alderman Pittman, any questions? Pro call, please.
Bellado.
Aye.
Bellado, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Coullos.
Aye.
Coullos, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Twelve ayes, your honor.
Thank you very much.
Item four is ordinance number 2018-041, an ordinance designating 12020 Maple Avenue as a historic landmark.
Need a motion by Alderman Bellado? We have a second. Alderman Pittman, any questions? Pro call, please.
Bellado.
Aye.
Bellado, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Coullos.
Aye.
Coullos, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Eleven ayes, your honor.
Thank you very much.
Getting the last item on the agenda is the resolution corporations partnerships with LLCs for the Beverly Bank and Trust documents.
Need a motion? Alderman Farrenwald, Segmaalun Viera, any questions? Pro call, please.
Bellado.
Aye.
Bellado, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Coullos.
Aye.
Coullos, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Twelve ayes, your honor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, members of the council. We do have a closed session this evening for pending litigation and discussion of collective bargaining with the three unions representing employees in the city.
Committee reports. Chief Val.
Yes, your honor. Our last meeting was on July 5th, 2018. The meeting was called the order 7:34 p.m. Alvin present were Alderman Frausto, Holly, Osling, and Thompson. Alvin absent were Alderman Bellado, Johnson, and Rita. Also present were Director Mike Marzal, Bob Mathi, Sarah Brown, and Omar Chamedyan. There was no public comment. Director Marzal presented some fee schedule recommendations. He noted that the fees are all over the board when they were comparing them to other municipalities. He noted that there were a few areas that could be increased slightly. He kept in mind not raising residential type permits and small increases otherwise. There was discussion about fees. It was noted that there were no inspection fees for two and three flat buildings. Four flats and above get notifications and pay a fee. Two and three flats are not. Apartments are supposed to be inspected upon getting a new tenant, but that does not happen more often than not. It was moved by Alderman Osling and seconded by Alderman Holly to city council. Voice vote, there were three in favor and one opposed, with Alderman Thompson voting no. Motion passed. 13102 Western Avenue plans were reviewed for the former Kleins property. There is banquet hall interested in opening there. Food would not be prepared on site. It would be catered. It was noticed that the rehab work for the corner and front along Western avenues needs to be completed before they can get occupancy. This was informational only and no action was required. A discussion regarding small wireless facilities. There was legislation passed by the state. We already went through all that tonight, so I'll skip that. 12625 Western, the old Walgreens property, CBRE, has a proposal to put a dialysis center in the east half of the old Walgreens building. The west half, fronting Western Avenue, would need to be retail. CBRE feels a smaller footprint will be easier to lease on the western half of the building. This is within zoning and within the medical district plan for the city. This also was informational only. 13114 to 16 Western Avenue, Ingalls Investment LLC is requesting a grant to do facade improvements and repairs to the building. Their plans were reviewed. It was moved by Alderman Osling and seconded by Alderman Frausto to approve a matching grant to a maximum of $5,000 for the purpose of making repairs and improvements as laid out in their application. All were in favor, and the motion passed, and I would like to make that in the form of a motion.
Have a motion. Second by Alderman Carr. Any questions? Pro call, please.
Bellado.
Aye.
Bellado, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Thompson, aye. I'm sorry. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Coullos.
Aye.
Coullos, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Twelve ayes, your honor.
Thank you very much.
Item four is ordinance number 2018-038, an ordinance designating 12020 Maple Avenue as a historic landmark.
Need a motion by Alderman Bellado? We have a second. Alderman Pittman, any questions? Pro call, please.
Bellado.
Aye.
Bellado, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Coullos.
Aye.
Coullos, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Twelve ayes, your honor.
Thank you very much.
Item four is ordinance number 2018-038, an ordinance authorizing and approving a contract with Cynthia Hawkins to provide fitness classes at the John Lee Reader Recreation Center.
Need a motion? Alderman Carr, Segmaalun Thompson, any questions? Go ahead. Is this free for constituents?
No, the contract as presented by Mr. Jackson requires compensation for the sum of $20 per class. I believe that the classes will be conducted three days a week, and there will be payment by the city once a month. So, no, it's not free. I don't know how they intend to, whether they intend to charge the residents for any people coming to the class, but we're paying $20 per class.
Apartments are supposed to be inspected upon getting a new tenant, but that does not, that does not happen more often than not. It was moved by Alderman Ossling and seconded by Alderman Holly to send to City Council. Voice vote, there were three in favor and one opposed, with Alderman Thompson voting no. Motion passed. 13102 Western Avenue plans were reviewed for the former Kleins property. There is banquet hall interested in opening there. Food would not be prepared on site, it would be catered. It was noticed that the rehab work for the corner and front along Western Avenue needs to be completed before they can get occupancy. There was, this was informational only and no action was required. A discussion regarding small wireless facilities, there was legislation passed by the state. We already threw all that tonight, so I'll skip that. 12625 Western, the old Walgreens property CBRE has a proposal to put a dialysis center in the east half of the old Walgreens building. The west half, fronting Western Avenue, would need to be re-tail. CBRE feels a smaller footprint will be easier to lease on the western half of the building. This is within zoning and within the medical district plan for the city. This also was informational only. 13114 to 16 Western Avenue, Ingalls Investment LLC is requesting a grant to do facade improvements and repairs to the building. Their plans were reviewed. It was moved by Alderman Ossling and seconded by Alderman Frosto to approve a matching grant to a maximum of $5,000 for the purpose of making repairs and improvements as laid out in their application. All were in favor and the motion passed, and I would like to make that in a form of a motion.
We have a motion. Second by Alderman Carr, any questions? Roll call, please.
Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Vieda.
Aye.
Vieda, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Kulos.
Aye.
Kulos, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Vacant property vendor, one of the vendors that we were using last year has backed out and have taken care of vacant properties. Stronger lawn maintenance has good to be the second vendor. They are a local business. It was moved by Alderman Ossling and seconded by Alderman Frosto to send to City Council for approval. All were in favor, and I'd like to make that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second by Alderman Viera, any questions? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman, what company backed out and what was the reason for backing out? I'm just curious.
Uh, I'm not sure what, I think Springfield backed, or, um...
Both.
Not Green. Which one was it?
It was the one that did the west side of the town.
Yeah.
Name is the same now. Prominent, we take over the west side.
Sportsfield. Sportsfield backed down.
Sure, a reason?
I, he didn't know at the time.
They had other work.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stone. Thank you, Mayor.
You have a motion, we have a second. Roll call, please.
Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Vieda.
Aye.
Vieda, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson. Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Kulos. Kulos, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
12112 Western Avenue, goat liquidation is looking to hang. A temporary sign to advertise they are open and under new management. Alderman Ossling commented the display window looks much better and is happy. The sign conforms with the sign ordinance and this is good for 30 days. It was moved by Alderman Ossling and seconded by Alderman Thompson to approve the temporary sign. All were in favor, motion passed. We also considered the 12020 Maple Avenue historic property designation, which we just approved. 2127 Market, an old existing wood fence is being taken down or replaced by a similar wood fence, but the area of the fenced in part is smaller than the current fence. It will not go beyond the back of the house. It was moved by Alderman Ossling and seconded by Alderman Frosto to approve the replacement. All were in favor, motion passed. Building Department reports were reviewed. Total revenues for June were $47,388.28, bringing total revenues through June to $310,209.94. Under Alderman concerns, Alderman Frosto asked if someone check out the shoe repair place on Vermont Street to see if they can clean that up. Director Marzal said the city is currently working with them for fire code violations. Alderman Holly asked that Thorndons be contacted about mowing the empty lot next to the gas station. He also noted that G and W and the DEF properties are looking bad as well and need to be mowed. Alderman Thompson asked about 11934 Longwood. It's a vacant house that has a dumpster. They're working on it periodically, but there's nothing going on lately. There are lots of weeds growing and the roof is falling, and she asked for the city to check on it. Alderman Holly asked about 2448 New Street. The grass is getting long. He also asked on the status of the inspection of the Ozak Building. A fire inspection is in process of being scheduled. There be no further business. It was moved by Alderman Ossling and seconded by Alderman Thompson to adjourn. All were in favor and the meeting adjourned at 8:10. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, August 7th at 7:30 following Finance Committee.
Thank you very much. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee, March, July 17. Numbers present, Alderman Frosto, Viera, Holly, Farrenwald, Thompson, Ossling. Also present by Manda and Director Mike Marzal. While Manda gets questions concerning the golf course, asking for a breakdown of expenses. Director Marzal will get information back to him. The Finance Committee approved the following. A count payable for July 25, 2018, in the amount of $754,557 and 8 cents. I make a motion for approval.
The motion was seconded by Alderman Farrenwald. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Vieda.
Aye.
Vieda, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson. Thompson, aye. Carr.